Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started here shortly. Okay, we're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting in order and determine if a forum is present. A quorum is present. Uh, we will start off with an invocation. We have a special guest today. We have Father Carlos Munoz from Blessed Sacrament Church. I'm sorry, I can't even read my own writing. Chris Munoz, Father, thank you so much for being here with us.
So thank you for the opportunity to come for this invocation. And so as we gather, Heavenly Father, as we gather for this city council meeting, we pause to offer our sincere gratitude. We're thankful for the opportunities you grant us to come together, to discuss matters of importance and work towards the betterment of our community. We give you thanks for our representatives in our council and in our community. Grant us the grace to approach each decision with open minds and compassionate hearts. Are we seeking the greater good for all our fellow citizens, especially here in Castle Hills? Even if we have difference of opinion, give us the unity, a unity of spirit. Lord, inspire us to serve selflessly, remembering the vulnerable and marginalized among us. May we act with compassion and justice, seeking solutions that uplift and empower those in need as Jesus did. Guide our city council members in their leadership roles that they may govern with integrity and wisdom. As King Solomon, to have understanding hearts to judge your people and distinguish right from wrong. May their decisions be guided by your divine light and may they be a source of inspiration and positive change in our community. Lord, grant us the courage to persevere in our pursuits of the common good, knowing that in unity we can achieve great things for the benefit of all. We offer this prayer with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and blessings for ourselves, for our city and for its people. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father, for being here with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Davis, will you lead us? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, first up, we have Citizen Commons. Mr. Carter, I can tell what number you wrote down. Okay, four, I got it. Uh, you want to speak now or do you want to speak on item number four? Whatever makes you happy, just your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Wayne Carter. I reside at 125 South Winston Lane. I am here tonight representing a group of citizens that have signed a petition on our streets, meaning West Castle and South Winston Lane, asking for the city to consider putting on an agenda item in the near future, a speed hump. I didn't say bump, I said a speed hump. Traffic engineering community terms these traffic calming features. The closest one I can tell you is in the HEB curbside pickup area, there's two of them there. They're about five feet wide by whatever the lane is. And bear in mind now, we live on lanes, not streets, as identified thirty-one feet. Ours are twenty-one feet. So what we're asking is, is consideration to put these in our neighborhood just at the intersection of Winston and Castle Lane. Because ever since our street has been paved, it's like an airport runway there. We have traffic exceeding fifty miles an hour going through that stop sign to Antonian, let's say, or if it's just cut through traffic, they turn on the West Castle Lane and almost around two wheels at rush hour traffic. So I don't want to belabor this and take y'all's valuable time up during this very important time for budget. But I have, I have the petition that represents, as I said, about eighty-five percent of the residents in our neighborhood have signed it. Those that I don't have did not say no, it just, I couldn't get a hold of them or they were a couple of rental properties. So I would, I have addressed this letter to the mayor, the council, and Mr. Rapley. And this is the original. Do I give it to the administrative staff or do you, sir? So again, and just, I want y'all to just to consider this in the future to try to, try, and I know money's tight, but try to do this. I have provided a copy of the drawing that I obtained from the city, uh, one of the city traffic engineers, uh, showing how this is constructed. And again, please don't think bump like you bump over at Alon HEB by your exit point. Think of the hump area. It's, and the way they're constructed is our emergency vehicles can, can traverse this because they're wide enough to go through some cutout. But normal vehicle traffic, it's not a bump. It does not jar your wisdom teeth. It's just a hump. It just slows you down, makes you cognizant of what the speed is. And our speed are twenty-five miles an hour. That's, that is hard to keep your foot off the pedal. And when you've got people wanting you to go home, people wanting you to go to school, they're late, they do not obey our traffic. In closing, I, it wasn't, God rest his soul, it wasn't Officer Singleton that came up. I can't remember. He issued seven speeding and running the stop sign tickets in forty-five minutes. Uh, this was right before the pandemic. I sat out there with him on my side of the fence. Seven in forty-five minutes, one afternoon. So again, thank you. Best of luck on our budget. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Uh, Mr. Paul, I'm assuming you're here to speak on the first agenda item. Okay, and next up, we have Mr. Terry Worth. Okay. Okay, uh, we will proceed on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Danes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. First time a business discussion and possible action on an award for the 2023 Street Improvements III project consisting of nine streets, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, this was and is the phase three of our street reconstruction projects. Um, this consists of the nine streets listed, the Ralletto, Danan Line, Lundblade, Cutilian, Cutilian, another section, Peg Sue, Phlox Parade, and Pur Simmons. Uh, we went through the process to bid these out and we received five bids and the lowest bid was RL Jones at one point nine, uh, one, five, two, five, nine. Uh, our, our engineers are recommending to award RL Jones, um, at that overall bid. Uh, I do believe that this was below the engineer's cost estimate. Um, I think two point one, some, huh? Two point three. So our estimates by our engineers was two point three. So these bids came in at one point nine. So obviously they're pretty competitive. And the award letter that is recommended, it's in your packet by, uh, Mr. Sanford with Arder is recommending RL Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. And just to confirm, these are from the voter approved, uh, funds, like correct?
These are from the two thousand twenty-three COs that were approved by, uh, the residents in November.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council? Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the contract to RL Jones for the total contract amount of one point nine, one, five, two hundred fifty-nine dollars to repair the streets noted in the agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Joyce. Second, any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on a resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, that's zero eight, authorizing the city to enter into our, in our local agreement between City of Castle Hills and San Antonio Water System regarding funding towards Town View Street Repair and authorizing the city manager to execute such an agreement, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, you have a copy of a revised resolution, the dais, um, that was done by Mr. Schnall. Uh, this is actually the ILA for the Town View, um, restoration of the street project. If you recall, SAWs, um, did the water main replacement and they did sections where they needed to restore. So we basically partner with them to restore the entire street. Um, we went out for bids, uh, selected by, uh, again, selected by our engineers and awarded, the lowest bid was Texas Materials. They actually planned to start on August twenty-eighth, uh, to do the entire street of Town View as a result. And as part of this ILA, we are receiving fifty-one thousand, uh, fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixteen of that hundred and fourteen, hundred and fourteen thousand back from SAWs. So the net cost of the city is sixty-two thousand five eighty-four. So, uh, SAWs already approved this ILA at their board meeting on August first. So this is for our council to approve, uh, and authorize me to execute that in our local so we can receive a check.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero eight.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have presentation discussion, submission of the city managers' proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
All right, could you, uh, fire that up, please? That's other duties assigned. You might have to open it, sorry. It'd be that one right there. Orange. Kind of burnt orange colors. Not applicable to UT. It's just the colors chosen today.
It's still loading, Mr. Rapley, sorry.
Okay. Well, while it's loading, I'll get started. Um, first of all, Mayor Council, thank you. This is the, um, delivery of the proposed FY twenty-four budget, uh, for fiscal year January first through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And if you all have a copy, it has, there's your budgets and everything like that. And, and, and you know, the reason why I have this cover is because, um, it's a representation of, of our employees and our services here. And, you know, I just wanted to read something real quick. You know, the theme of this budget, as indicated on the budget cover, is a representation of our city services and employees. I want to thank the mayor and council for taking measures to address our employees over the last two years. This includes Mr. Paul, Mr. Isbrand, because this has been a multi-year, um, improvement, uh, as you'd say. The effort to change your retirement system and the need to address our police officer recruitment numbers earlier this year, including the modification of salaries to bring back the staffing level of our police department back to what the residents demand and expect as a resident in Castle Hills. These changes ensure we are able to compete and retain talented employees, not just in police and fire, but the entire organization. Over the last two years, the budget process of city council has made changes in compensation to compete with surrounding cities, not only in police, but the fire department and public works. As a result of this, may impact operational expenses to increase, but work sustains and our city services continue. Every budget is attempt to balance current and future needs within the framework of limited resources. This year's budget has been constructed within those guidelines. The proposed budget sustains the city operations, excellent city operations and services, includes operational expense changes from last year's adopted budget to the nine-month budget that incorporates our debt model, includes capital needs towards improving the city and structure as we finish out, uh, the reconstruction area of our streets next year. I wish to extend my appreciation to city council for attending all the meetings so far and the continued meetings you will have to attend, uh, reviewing the budget documents as we move forward and the continual guidance as we work to develop this proposed budget to its final adoption. This nine-month budget has not been easy. We've had to drill down in related areas to line item expenses and departments to, to we were programming correctly for our departments in order to operate in this truncated fiscal year. Also want to express my appreciation to entire city staff, our leadership from our city department heads, police chief, fire chief, Mr. Harada, dedication, hard work, and striving to maintain the highest level of services to the citizens and businesses of our community. I would like to also recognize Ms. Davis, our fiscal officer. She has been involved in every aspect in the development of this proposed budget, and I appreciate her hard work and efforts on this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
First, I will, um, I'll get started here. These are the timelines so far. Obviously, the July eleventh meeting, we had um, our first budget workshop, preliminary revenues, council goals, July eighteenth, second budget workshop, we went through some special funds, TMRS again, July twenty-fifth, um, third budget workshop, we mainly focus on city departments there where we looked at what we cost as far as salaries last year and what we're looking preliminary to be as part of this proposed budget. And then, of course, I filed the city budget on September, I mean, excuse me, August third, two thousand twenty-three with our city secretary, Ms. Franco. Some of the areas I'm going to highlight as part of this presentation, we will cover revenue expenditures, those budget highlights in the general fund, especially as it relates to the next nine months. Uh, list of some unfunded requests right now. Obviously, cost of living adjustment, which is not incorporated into the proposed budget, and then conclusion, next steps. So right now, our general fund revenue expenditures is balanced uh, at the proposed amount of five million nine eighty-two, five thirty-eight. And this is again, nine months. January first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Things to note, obviously, our basic service is maintained at current levels, adequately funded reserves. We maintain adequate levels of Texas cities from future uncertainties, uh, well over six months now as a fund. Uh, revenues are established reasonable levels, historical data. Um, and that's something we've kind of had to drill down to for a nine-month budget. Department of Program costs, uh, budgeted at a reasonable level, parallels the cost of service for the nine months. Does not include any additional personnel, does not include a cost of living adjustment, and there's no increase in the healthcare for employees. Captured costs from the American Rescue Plan, uh, providing the fire and safety equipment. Um, I believe Chief Ludwig, uh, had listed about five items. There's three items in there that are, I call health and safety that would be beneficial to the residents. I think it's the oximeter, um, and what's the other one, I think? Hot Mariner that the fire department can use when responding to residents. So I think those are essential, um, to, to be budgeted right now within the ARPA fund. And then, um, we're on the positive side of, of our expenses of two hundred and thirty-four thousand right now. So I'm, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, bringing you a balanced budget. However, we're on the positive side of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, in revenues. This is mainly for our new council members. The nine-month budget, why? The city benefits of fiscal year and changing this. The current fiscal year for the city begins on January first of the calendar year and ends December thirty-first. That's what we're operating in right now. A fiscal year that starts on October first with the property tax year as a, as for a collection. This is crucial to property tax revenue being the largest revenue collected in the general fund. This will get us on pattern to be able to figure out exactly what's coming in from Ad Valorem and how to budget correctly, uh, and necessary because, you know, right now, again, um, operating and ending in January, we get the first part of the year for revenue for Ad Valorem collections, which most cities do starting October first. An October first fiscal year will match the federal government. October first fiscal year runs in line with grant funding opportunities, including federal funding opportunities. This fiscal year twenty-four is needed to change the fiscal year beginning January first, ending September thirtieth, with an audit performed after that to close out the fiscal year. The fiscal year and adopted budget would be the nine months. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, this would begin October first, twenty twenty-four, and end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, putting us in line with, you know, almost every other city in the area, state, and in line with state and local, uh, state and federal government. Uh, this has been on the to-do list and a priority of city council over the last couple of years. Um, and like I said, I just wanted to recap that for our new members. Okay. I'm sure what's going on.
Mr. Rapley, I got you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be up here for the next ten minutes pushing this button.
Well, there you go.
Thank you. Uh, proposed twenty-four budget total revenue. Total revenue proposed twenty-four are six million two one six nine twenty-one on that nine months. The current revenue related to FY twenty-three and our current operating budget is trending on the positive side to finish out the year, seven million seven hundred and seventy-four, six forty-two, which I believe is, is close to the, uh, two fifty, three hundred thousand on the positive side at the end of the year. Uh, future revenue sources, we are looking at franchise fees for sanitation, taking on dispatch services in other city, and reviewing our development fee structure, which we hope to do all that by the end of the year. If any of those become implemented, they'll be effective for the FY twenty-four budget, and so we can start collecting revenue from any of these sources. Right now, our court income, five twenty-six, two fifty. Permanent inspection fees, again, this is all nine months. Uh, two hundred thousand four fifty, sanitation, four hundred and ten thousand. Ad Valorem collection, right now, at the proposed rate, would bring in three million eighty-six thousand one ninety-six. That's Ad Valorem collections plus the two, uh, revenues for, um, delinquency and what's the other one, Nora? And the penalty. So those are other, uh, sources of revenue from Ad Valorem. Sales and use tax, a million three eighty-four. Um, we're trending above ten percent right now from last year's totals on sales tax. And then franchise fees, four hundred and forty thousand, and then other sources, about a hundred and seventy thousand twenty-five. Uh, most of that, um, is, is interest. So we've been gaining a lot of interest on all our accounts across the board, and we hope to continue that. And that totals the six million two hundred and sixteen thousand nine twenty-one. Expenses, the total expenses for the proposed FY twenty-four budget, five million nine eighty-two, five thirty-eight. Current expenses related to the FY twenty-three budget trending to finish the year at seven million six eighty. The proposed adopted budget was seven million seven fifty-three. So we're looking to, uh, land a little low the expenditures for this year, uh, from that standpoint. And then administration, seven eighty-four. Uh, municipal court, two hundred and fourteen thousand, police department, uh, two, two, two million four sixty-seven, nine ninety-three. Um, that incorporates, obviously, the change last year to the department's, uh, uh, salaries on the police department, fire, um, street department, three twenty-one, four twenty-four, sanitation department, four twenty-two, eight seventy-three, and then capital expenses is eighty-nine thousand two fifty, for a total of five million nine eighty-two, five thirty-eight, which again, puts us on that positive side of about two hundred thirty-five thousand roughly. Street and drainage funds, nine-month budget. Um, as a result of the adoption of the city's capital plan four years ago, the city continues, uh, to prioritize street maintenance, uh, and repairs. Revenue from the street maintenance is comprised, obviously, of street maintenance, sales tax, digital billboard. This has helped us in funding the, uh, street maintenance program. And then, um, last year, the, uh, two years ago, when the COs were taken out for certificates obligation, this provided the fourteen streets that have been reconstructed over the last two years. Both have been outlined in the fiscal year budgets. And the twenty-four proposed budget, the following year has been programmed in. This seventy-five thousand will basically close out the thirty, I think, thirty-one to thirty-two streets, uh, for maintenance that started about four years ago. And part of next year, what we will do is, um, if you all recall, for street maintenance, y'all approved the, um, you might have saw the truck out here sort of grading the streets. Once we have all that data, we'll be able to put a new streetman, street maintenance program that will be effective to cover five to ten years, uh, so we don't let our streets get from, uh, uh, to a reconstructive point again. So we can continue the maintenance program and keep the repairs necessary. Uh, drainage utility fund, the debt payment as a result, three hundred ninety-eight thousand eight ninety-two, uh, eight sixty-two, sorry. And then the current projects under consideration, uh, the Mamar, Mamarilla, Carmaria, Mimoso Carmaria, sorry, to West Avenue Drainage Project. And then, um, like I said, we're going to continue with the street maintenance seal coats to close out that, uh, street maintenance program that was approved back in two thousand nineteen. For our capital projects in the nine months, the city has identified twelve streets for reconstruction for drainage projects. Obviously, y'all just awarded a, a bid for nine streets right now. So that leaves three streets left for reconstruction. And then two streets that will incorporate drainage improvements, both Carrollwood and Northmantin. Uh, and then street reconstruction at three million and drainage at three million. The funding was approved by the issue into the twenty-three COs for these projects, uh, back in November. The budget process under the capital replacement funds, again, nine months. Under the capital replacement fund, um, we have looked and identified some dollars for one-time expenditures just in that nine months right now to allocate some dollars to improving, uh, the building, uh, mainly probably in the chambers here. Uh, and then some dollars associated with the commons right now. And then the workstation upgrade as we continue to close out, um, all the replacements of the laptops for everyone. Uh, if there's any that need to be closed out into FY twenty-four, these dollars will be there to do that. And then, as we've done every year, this is the capital expenditures we set aside for future. Um, the seventy-five hundred is the rescue truck, uh, fifteen thousand for the future fire vehicle. Thirty-seven thousand five hundred for public works vehicle, eleven thousand two fifty for the future fire. Uh, the, uh, SCBA, the breathing apparatus. Seventy-six thousand set aside for fire equipment, and that's what I mentioned earlier in the ARPA fund. List of unfunded requests, uh, I, if you recall, the chief had one of the requests on there, which was replace the six overhead doors, um, on the fire station because we've had some issues with, uh, having to manually close those and open those uh, at times. And, uh, it's about that time to replace them. And then, uh, forty-five thousand for the F three fifty to replace the, the field truck crew cab for public works. It is from two thousand six. I got that one right this time. Thanks, Rick. Colas, okay, obviously, the cola has not been in, programmed into the proposed budget. Um, uh, when I have done these budgets the last four to five years, I've never incorporated a cola. Uh, I felt it's always up to council, obviously, to, um, go through that process. And obviously, you can see here, zero, uh, zero increase to the four million four fifty-three. And then three percent is a hundred and thirty-three thousand six nineteen at a cost of four, uh, four point five million. And then if a four percent is done, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four point six. And then, uh, an additional, if I were to take my math right, about forty thousand to move it up to five percent at four point six, seven, six, six, sixty-seven. So the next steps, uh, obviously, which the next item will discuss the tax rate, uh, take a record vote and schedule the public hearing with that. Uh, possible budget workshop next Tuesday night. Um, I know that Councilman Joyce has recommended some type of workshop to discuss ARPA, uh, cola seeds, everything we listed here. I know we have a placeholder for next Tuesday night at six thirty. Um, I, I know the Councilman Joyce was recommending maybe an alternate time, a lunch, uh, along those lines, possibly, but that's kind of a placeholder for next Tuesday night to discuss those. Um, and I assume that's discussing the rest of ARPA and seed thoroughly to program those in for FY twenty-four. And then, of course, we also have a placeholder for August twenty-second, uh, six thirty, uh, that will publish a notice of the tax rate the sixteenth. And then the proposed budget hearings on September fifth, six thirty. And then we adopt the budget, uh, levy tax rate on September twelfth, uh, at six thirty PM. Questions? Now, I will preface the questions to say that Mr. Joyce has provided me a list for Nora and I to review. Um, so I would suggest if you do have questions, feel free to email us so we can sit down and review those, get answers back to you or meet with you one-on-one to discuss as we go through this adoption process.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council, Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Rapley, I did have a question. This is, uh, piggybacking off-
This is piggybacking off the TML presentation earlier in the budget process where he explained that municipalities can pay down their the two, two-to-one pension upfront and therefore cut down on the year-over-year cost to the same municipalities that would do that. Have you taken a look at how, say, 100,000, 200,000, 300,000 upfront in payment of the pension might impact us in not just this year's, next year's budget that we're discussing, but in further years? In other words, what I'm interested in is possible constriction or reduction of the delta that would help us out in the succeeding years.
Not, not specifically looked at that. I'm sure that Ms. Davis can get with our TMRS representative to see what that looks like and develop some kind of scale to show what that might look like to pay that down. We can get those numbers.
And I have a follow-up question to that. The ARPA funds, would they be available for that sort of process?
No, you can't pay with, they're not, basically, there's a category on there that says you cannot pay your pension or retirement with ARPA funds.
So we would have to have unallocated funds from the general fund. But I think it would still be helpful to know how we could reduce that delta.
All right, Chief, correct? Is that, yep?
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rappley, I just wanted to ask if it might be possible. I know we keep adding all of these things to your agenda, you and Ms. Davis. But is it possible to give us a sense of what other cities are doing with respect to cola?
Yes.
Because there's pretty substantial difference in the options that you've given us.
Yeah.
And it'd be nice to know what others.
I'm hoping to have that next week sometime early. I'm going to be sending that out to all the cities. We have requested that to do. As the president of the region now, I've been tasked with that. So I'm going to get all that number and hopefully have that collected by early next week from most of the cities that we sort of compete with or are, you know, similar cities, I guess you'd say. But I think last year I showed you all about 20 cities in the area of what they're doing with colas. But I will have that data.
Thank you.
Council, any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I do want to go back. I recognize Mr. Paul was here and he wanted to speak, but I forgot to mention him. So I was going to give Mr. Paul a chance to speak real quick.
Frank Paul, 112 Chalamar. I just wanted to make a comment, and I was hoping to do it while the contractor was here. After 44 years of living on Chalamar, we were fortunate enough to have our street done last year. And I appreciate that. And since I was on council, I still didn't vote for it because we need to keep arms linked. But point is, they broke ground on the street, started scraping it July 5th. Now, some of you know me and know I have a pretty good memory. It started on July 5th. They didn't start paving until September after the day after Labor Day. That's two months. So we had a hot summer. We had no rain, kind of like we have now. And we had a whole lot of dust. And I just bring this to the attention of the council and to our city manager, who's aware of it, because he did what he could to try to get some water on the ground to kind of dampen it some. But maybe something could be written into the contract. There needs to be a time construction as far as making sure that they don't forget us over here, go do this. We weren't the only street. There was a couple of others. Now, as I look at council, I know there's at least one person up there that's got their street coming up. And I don't think Mrs. Haley would enjoy such a thing. So, and Lundberg coming up? I believe so, yeah. Okay, I just, I thought, I thought I remembered that. So anyway, I just want to make a point that y'all think about this. Find a way to make sure this doesn't happen moving forward. We had, and this was only for one block, 100 block of Chalamar. One block, two months to get it done. Now, I was on council as it started going. If Kai got away, we didn't anticipate it in the beginning. But now I'm just telling you, and I just think it needs to be looked at to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, next up, we have consider an act upon proposed tax rate for year 2023. Take a record vote and schedule a public hearing for the proposed tax rate, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Mayor, can you fire up that second story? By the way, I'll let Mr. Paul know that was a different contractor than the one that was selected tonight. So, and yes, it will be. The language is in the contract. There will be. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Mayor Council, this is the portion of the 2023 tax rate. So we will go through this to show, obviously, what is recommended as part of the proposed budget currently laid in there for ad valorem collections and what were currently proposed to pay our debt, which there's no proposing. We have to pay our debt portion. So I'll go through this real quick. August 2nd, the calculations received from the tax assessor collector, calculations submitted to y'all on the governing body as part of the packet there, the agenda. Discuss a tax rate tonight, propose a tax rate. If it exceeded the no new revenue rate, take a record vote, schedule a public hearing and vote to adopt a tax rate. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell? Thank you. Schedule and announce tax rate three to 14 days from the September 5th. And then adopt the budget, of course, adopt the tax rate at the time. This right here is the various tax rates. And for our new council members, obviously, that last year, I think, was the first year when they changed to the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval, which used to be the effective rate, the no new revenue tax rate. And then the voter approval now used to be the rollback from that standpoint. And on the voter approval rate, previously known as the tax rollback tax rate provides a taxing unit with the same amount of tax revenue. It spent the previous year for day-to-day operations plus an extra 3.5%. That was previously 8% increase for operations, sufficient funds to pay debts in the coming year. And the de minimis rate is created under Senate Bill 2 and only applies to certain cities taxing units. And of course, Castle Hills does qualify on that. The tax increase elections for taxing units that are calculated de minimis rate depend on whether the adopted tax rate is greater than or less than the voter approval rates and, and the dominion, dominion rate, the minimum rate. If you recall, last year, we had a voter approval rate that was recommended in last year's budget, a .528499. But I wanted to be able to provide you all the different tax rates here and what they are classified as. The tax rates are comprised of two components, maintenance and operations, your M and O, and that is revenue for operations. And then interest and sinking is to pay your debt. The city currently has debt obligations paid with property tax. Therefore, the current tax rate is comprised entirely of maintenance, M and O, with an interest and sinking tax rate. The city issued certificate of obligations to pay for street and drainage capital projects. The street portion only comes from property tax, which created the INS when we did the certificates obligation back in 2020. In this case, series 2020 and series 2023 now impact the FY24 budget fiscal year as part of the INS. Due to the issuance of the new debt, the INS tax rate is sort of the driving force in the increase in the tax rate, including year to year. That's from last year. The voter approved was the .524. And I know that council last year, as part of the adopted budget, had lowered it to the .508 from that standpoint. And then the operational expenses too, from year to year, was the, obviously, the change in our retirement system and the public safety with the changes in the police department salaries from year to year as well. As demonstrated on the chart below, including the IRS tax rate, INS tax rate, which funds the payment of city debt, you can see the increase is 0.42352 from year 22. And the M and O tax rate, which funds the functions of our general fund, will actually go down or is down by 007382 for the 2023 tax year. If the voter approved tax rate, if adopted. Again, the voter approved tax rate here is .557514. And if you look here, the M and O here, .480827. And the M and O is the 473, which is a slight decrease from last year. But the INS, which was only 0.27, paying only on the debt note for the 2020 series, was about 217,000, I believe. And this year, we have the 2020, 2023 series to pay for. And that's to create our debt, which is the INS rate of .070213, which is that change of the .042. The total tax rate, again, last year, .058. And then the recommend right now that's proposed in the budget is the .543, the difference of 0.34. That is just slightly one increment below the voter approval tax rate of .557514. This is the tax rate overview. As I mentioned, the 2023 no new revenue rate currently sits at for the 2023 tax rate, it's .483269. The voter approval rate that is programmed into the proposed budget is the .543658, slightly below the VAR voter approval rate. The estimated M and O revenue, and this 4,399, excuse me, 928, that's for 12 months. That's showing that if we were to approve the .54, that's how much that it would create in ad valorem collections. And then, of course, the difference between the no new revenue and the VA tax rate is the .06389. Case you're wondering, the no new revenue rate would generate an estimated 3,605,266 in revenue for the general fund in a nine-month, 2.7 million. The voter approved tax rate, which is slightly below that at 5.4 plugged in, would allow for 3,029,946. The tax rate overview here, the average home increases. Appraisals obviously went up from 23 to 24. Last year, the average home of 391,000. This year, they have the average home at 424,651, which is an increase of 32,000. Last year, the, the, the rate for the homeowner was 1,0993 at that .5068 rate at 2022. And then now the proposed would be 20,2009, and then increase of about 316,000. Sorry, I went, I'm sorry, I'm missing a slide here. Oh. Hmm, okay. Sorry, Mayor Council. I have a slide here by the numbers and a single cent generates, is it in there? Okay, so sorry, it's just not on the screen. The single cent generates roughly 75,000 based on M and O levy collections. The INS rate is based on the impact of debt. This brings down the availability of M and O collections for maintenance and operations of the organization, thus the general fund. City's debt increased, has increased a series due to the 2023 series, 188,200 payments, and then 23 has a payment of 351,000. This is a tax levy collection of about 595,000 for the tax rate. The no new revenue rate would generate, as I mentioned, 3,605 for a nine-month would be the 2.7. This would actually be less by 326,000. So if you went down to the no new revenue, we're on the positive side, 234,000. That would take us below the the balanced budget effectively. Obviously, recent legislation a few weeks ago is supposed to drop school district tax rates by 10.7. School taxes, obviously, as you all know, make up two-thirds of all given taxpayers' tax bill this year. So I kind of look at that as sort of a silver lining that the school district taxes will be dropped in this case. And then, again, staff is recommending the voter approval rate, which is slightly below that VAR of .5436538, which is 0.3490, higher than the adopted 2022 tax rate of .506888. Public hearing on the tax rate, publishing notice, must hold. Public hearing, a quorum of the governing body must be there, and only one public hearing is required to adopt a tax rate. So again, Mayor Council, you know, I've discussed this extensively with Ms. Wallace, who assists us with these areas of helping us determine our tax rate implications. And Ms. Davis, and you know, it is a higher tax rate because we're pulling less from the M and O because of the higher debt this year. And so that is what is recommended from an operational standpoint. Again, we're on the positive side, 234,000. So you all, as council, have the ability to adjust. I want to make sure we incorporate colas this year as well. So it is a balancing act from this standpoint. But you know, one of the things I'd have to say is, you know, getting these streets done and these drainage infrastructure improvements is sort of what it takes at this point. I mean, years of non-maintenance and, and sort of streets going to a reconstruction stage has been costly. So this has helped fix and repair majority of these streets from that standpoint. But it's at the cost of paying debt. Most cities have debt to pay for infrastructure. And so we're at that point as well now, so. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I do have one quick question. And for me, it's very important that we are consistent with the increase that was promised to the voters when they approved the certificates of obligation in 2022. And it would appear that it's a little bit more, but I just want to clarify publicly that it's because we lowered the tax rate last year, correct?
There's some impact to that, plus the increase in, in, in valuations as well. Yeah. And again, I think if, as I sent you all today from Andrew Freeman, when there was a discussion about going out for the COs and calling the election, that was based on .52448 last year, thinking that would be about a penny and a half increase as a result. But again, our interest in sinking is what it is right now. And so we obviously have to pay that debt. And then, and now, some of those, those expenses organizationally, again, we're talking about the adjustments that we've made, again, retirement salaries related to the public safety as well. So those have incorporated a little bit higher maintenance and operations cost from that standpoint. But yes, Mayor, that's, that was what was given last year.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council?
Mr. Rappley, if we take into account the lowering of the school district tax, I see here, I mean, the average household in Castle Hills would be up 300. But if you throw that into the mix, what's the impact?
I don't have that offhand. I mean, that makes up two-thirds of a total tax rate, but I can get that information as well.
I think that would be helpful. And just as an historical reference, last year, when we went through this process, it was more than, there were several factors for the lowering by two cents. The factors were that we were hitting an historic increase in one year of property values. In addition to that, we were coming out of COVID. And I remember that discussion well. I mean, it was a somewhat of a nail-biter because we were still guessing as to what's going to happen. But as I read all the numbers, we're all on the plus side. Our sales tax revenue seemed to continue to outperform. seemed to continue to outperform what we would have expected. It started during COVID, we outperformed, and here we are in twenty twenty-three, and that looks like it's going to continue on that same trend. So I'm not concerned about the revenue part, but I just want to make sure the, you know, the citizens understand that we we did backtrack two cents, and it was out of consideration for an historic rise in the values. So uh, this would be perhaps a very modest um tax increase. Would that be correct?
I would think so. At this case, based on where the tax rate was last year, um, or what was recommended last year when we went out for um uh the certificates at the time, you know. I I was going to put the timeline we used last year to show the different tax rates over the last five, six years. You know, we've hovered around, I think, on average about point five one, went down to four eight, back up to point five two last year. Um, as far as what would be the voter approval and or rollback, what they used to call it, so we've hovered around that mark, but again, uh, taking on this debt has increased the INS, and so we had that debt payment to make, and you know, again, um, you know, I uh, there's obviously costs with doing that and trying to improve your infrastructure long term. Um, that's what this council's had to do.
And I just had one other follow follow-up comment. That is exactly what the taxpayers should should have as a message. There is a price to everything, being competitive and literally being able to retain employees, city employees, including police and fire, which are critical, requires us to be competitive. That's number one. Number two, uh, I think I speak for most citizens that drive our streets. I don't want to be risking new rims, broken tires, and a variety of other problems that were chronic and reported from that very spot that you're at by numerous citizens leading up to our uh construction and uh infrastructure. So I I I think that all of those things are out in the open. I just want to make sure that they are stated here tonight because that will be one of the questions. What are we buying with the modest tax increase?
Well, again, you have a slight impact to expenses from year to year because of those changes, but mainly the debt drives that because it lowers your M and O and it raises your interest in sinking from that standpoint. Um, I think ultimately, the um the sort of gap right now and bringing that up will be sustainable for a while to incorporate future debt payments and to hover around that mark for no future increases as long as revenues are sustainable.
Council, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I mean, we take no joy in raising taxes, but I think there's a, there's a lot of value in this proposed tax increase. Mr. May has gone through most of those points as Mr. Rapley has, but I I think there's value. You you all remember maybe six or eight months ago, our public safety troops were kind of um in disarray in the sense that uh we weren't competitive with other cities. We didn't have the two to one. Our patrolman salaries were way down, and we fixed that. But yes, there's, there's a price to be paid, but our police department is stabilized. Uh, chief has got the staff back up again, and um, that's a wonderful thing. The retirement thing is something that impacts all staff and will help us be competitive with other cities and reduce the chance of employees uh jumping from one city to another, and also, you know, by the way, rewarding them so for some a whole lot of hard work. But of course, the big, the big thing is the INS fixing the streets and the citizens were very um definitive in their voting for the uh the bond certificates of obligation back in November. So uh, I don't, I don't, it's going to be, there's a lot of value in that fixing all of these streets provides a lot of value in addition to the other items as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, only the street side affects the INS here, but I mean, uh, you know, again, we've done a lot of drainage improvements as well uh from that standpoint, so. But the bulk of this has to do with the INS increase and talking to Ms. Wallace.
Ms. Haley.
Mr. Rapley, what percentage do you estimate of the citizens this doesn't impact? Because taxes, the taxes are frozen, city and the school taxes are for are already at a ceiling.
Um, I I if I had to say percentage, um, and I mean, I had a this conversation earlier with a Mr. Paul, and you know, I think when this started from the the sort of freeze there, uh, I think it was like at forty percent, maybe, um, give or take, and you know, I think it's probably around low thirties. Um, that it's basically your tax rate's frozen.
So some of the people that might really be impacted that are older and their tax values, their rip, their abolorum has gone up because their property values ha- have increased, that it's really not going to affect their situation as far as owing more taxes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I have to say with improving your infrastructure and improving drainage corridors, it's it's going to increase, you know, values in and around the area because that's what the city has done is improve its infrastructure, you know. Um, people want to move here, and when it's a desirable place, the the cost of housing increases. Um, but that's something that was um took time, but you know, I have to say, Council, we just haven't sat on these dollars that we borrowed. I mean, you know, we finished out the two twenty series for streets already, and you've awarded today one phase, the second phase will be later this year for the twenty twenty-three. So um, I would have to say in less than seven months or so, since the voters approved this, we're moving forward with new streets.
Council, you know, um, Mr. Snell, you have a comment?
Oh, sorry.
I have an answer to Mr. May's question about tax rates. Okay, the the tax rate, ah, the tax rate for the school district in twenty twenty-two, Ms. Davis looked up for me, it was just a fraction over a dollar eighteen cents per hundred dollars of value. So one point one eight. Mr. Rapley's chart that he showed a few minutes ago said that the appraisal district's average value of a home in Castle Hills was four twenty-four six fifty-one. The legislation adopted in Austin gives everyone who has a homestead a one hundred thousand dollar reduction in value when they calculate their school tax. That's the way I understand what the bill says. So we've translate that into dollars and cents in Castle Hills. If a, if a property owner, that average property of four twenty-four six fifty-one, if that were fully taxed, no exemption at all, non-homestead, for example, that would generate five thousand eleven dollars in tax for the school district. For the homestead, we do the multiplication of one point one eight times not four twenty-four six fifty-one, but three twenty-four six fifty-one. That number is thirty-nine oh eight, so the differential is roughly eleven hundred dollars. We don't know what the school district's tax rate for twenty twenty-three is. They're in the same situation the city is of doing all this work now to come up with a budget, look at their INS rate, look at their M and O rate, just like the city does. Um, but but the history we have is last year's tax rate. So just looking at it, if this had happened a year ago, that's the delta that we're talking about. Um, one clarification on something Mr. Rapley said, at your meeting on September twelfth, if that meeting is to adopt the tax rate, that meeting requires a quorum of four members of the governing body, plus the, not counting the mayor. Um, there's a requirement of an extra large quorum for a special meeting, like if you have a meeting on uh, I think he said August twenty-fifth, quorum of that meeting is four members of the governing body, not counting the mayor. That same rule of four members of the governing body, not counting the mayor, is applicable even at a regular meeting if it's the meeting where you adopt the tax rate. My final comment is your agenda says that this agenda item, Council, is to uh to select a proposed tax rate and also set the date and time of the public hearing on that tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Uh, as I was going to add, Council, it's not lost on me the gravity of increasing the taxes. But I think we have to realize that we're not asking for faith in that we the first motion we had today was to approve the contract for these streets. Uh, we're showing that we're already moving and making decisions to put these dollars where the voters asked for us to put them. And so I think we all realize that when we communicated what exactly the certificates of obligation entailed, it was a a quid pro quo. We knew that it was going to take additional money to fund the improvements to our streets, and that's what over seventy percent of voters wanted, and I think it's up to us to uh make sure that that debt obligation is paid accordingly. Mr. Rapley.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and um, I would just again say that we um the the sort of positive side here is on the proposed budget that we are in the the positive side that we're proposing in the revenue, so we have a little wiggle room. We got the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, so um, I surely want to make sure that we're able to capture anything we did need in the proposed budget, especially colas for our employees uh from that standpoint, but it it does for allow for a little wiggle room on that as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council, do we have a motion? Mr. Ray.
And Mr. Mayor, before a motion is made, uh, I'd just like to call my fellow council members, uh, that is the Tuesday after Labor Day. Is anyone going to have an extended trip?
Ms. Daines, we're looking at you.
It was probably instant.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. Mr. May.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we adopt a tax rate of point five four three six five eight on a vote to take place on September fifth at six thirty here in city.
No, sir.
Nope.
You 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 are not adopting the tax rate. You are adopting a proposed tax rate. And I believe Mr. Rapley wants the public hearing on this to be on September twelfth. Some of the fifth, the pub, the public hearing, okay, all right, then you were right about the date, just not adopt the tax rate, but adopt a proposed tax rate, sir.
Okay, should I restate the whole thing?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I I propose that we set a date of September fifth at six thirty for discussion and possible adoption uh of a proposed tax rate of point five four three six five eight.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Joyce, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Reminded me.
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call, well, I got a note on something, but roll call, uh, Maria.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Mayor Council, just so you know, last year it was a proposed of that point five two, and then again, was later adjusted to the point five zero eight, so you you know, again, there can be adjustments, but you can't go over, Mr. Snell reminded me, the point five four three six eight as proposed, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Our attorney's advice.
Okay, Council, next up, we have consider an act upon scheduling a public hearing on the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, uh, as part of the budget process, we're recommending to have the budget hearing on September fifth, um, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council. Mr. Joyce.
I move that we have our uh public hearing to consider the tax rate on September fifth at six thirty at a regular meeting.
This is on the proposed budget, not.
On the proposed budget, excuse me. Uh, move that we have our public hearing on the proposed budget on September fifth at six thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I have Mr. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. And next up, we have discussion of possible action and appointments to the Crime Control Prevention District. Chief Zuniga.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor, citizens. Um, this year, uh, crime control has four board members that are up for either reappointment or um, having some new members uh selected or appointed to their seats. Uh, we have uh John Squire, uh, who is currently our president. Uh, I've reached out to him. He has stated, he indicated that he no longer wishes to uh serve. Um, I think what he stated, he's either, I think he's moving out of the city. Um, so he'll need a a new appointment. Patsy Martin, I have not been able to reach or confirm from her whether or not she wishes to serve again. Uh, one of the other board members has indicated that they understood that she did not, but again, I have not confirmed. Uh, I think she had some medical uh procedure last week, and so I don't know if that's why she's out. Uh, Chance Kaufman does wish to re-serve another term uh as well as Richard Evans uh also wishes to serve another term. The other three board members, Scott Witty, uh, Valori Molina, and Anna Frias are all good until next year.
Thank you, Chief. Council. Ms. Da- Ms. Haley.
I have someone. Are we supposed to say now about keeping Mr. Kaufman and, I mean, I who's, I don't know who's supposed to do that, but I will say that David Bordelon at one oh seven Carrollwood has expressed uh an interest in serving, so.
Mr. Snell, you want to give us some guidance?
Well, just to answer Ms. Haley's question, I think the appropriate thing to do right now, since the chief has indicated you have two members of the CCPD who are interested in returning, be appropriate for there to be a motion, if the council is so inclined, make a motion, um, seconded and and adopt a motion to reappoint those two people if the council is so inclined, and then start considering new names for the other two vacancies.
Then I'd like to move that Chance Kaufman and Richard Evans be reappointed to the Crime Control and Prevention District.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. A second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Uh, now we can entertain some you members.
Now, I'd like to propose that David Bordelon be appointed to the Crime Control and Prevention District.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Haley for David Bordelon. Do we have a second? The second by Ms. Daines, all in favor? Unanimous, Council. Thank you. I believe that leaves us uh one more. We have anybody else? Chief?
So have have you heard from Ms. Martin?
Yes, Ms. Martin will be stepping down, Chief.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we uh carry this over to the next meeting because uh, frankly, I have not gone out in the community or vetted or seen or heard from anyone else, and I think it would be appropriate if we leave that one position open.
Chief, does that present any problems for you?
It should not. We are in the process also as well to do in our budget. Uh, in fact, tomorrow night, we are having a uh next meeting. Uh, it's scheduled. Uh, of course, the only thing that I don't remember if for a public hearing, if there's a higher number of board members that need to be present.
Um, I I think your quorum, which your meetings is four, I'm maybe five, but um, one vacancy that shouldn't present a problem with your being able to get through your budget process. The key is getting through it because it's a very calendar-oriented thing.
Correct. The only, the only issue is making sure that all the members are present, and as of uh today, uh, six of those have uh committed to be here tomorrow.
Perfect. Mr. Joyce, did you have a comment?
Well, I I think Chief has got it already. I was just going to mention that Mr. Squire has offered to hold over in the event that we don't get the appointments this evening to attend tomorrow's e- tomorrow's meeting. So, because we don't really know if Mr. Bordelon is going to be able to come.
That is correct, and that's correct. Uh, Mr. Squire did say that he would stay over uh
Okay.
and and chair until.
Okay.
His position.
And and Chief, we have uh another council meeting tentatively set up for August twenty-second, I believe, Mr. Rapley. And so I think.
Well, we, we have one for next Tuesday night, if that we can place something on the agenda next Tuesday night.
If if uh Council, let that be a reminder that if it gives you a week to try to find uh somebody else that's interested in serving on CCPD. Perfect. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have discussion of possible action on appointments to the Economics Development Committee. Ms. Daines, you're up.
Yes, thank you. So I did review um the, the people who were left on. Yes, thank you. So I did review um the, the people who were left on the list, I think, after the other appointments have been made, and I would like to appoint Richard Keith to the Economic Development Committee.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Danes.
No, Mayor, you have an alternate pick, too.
Ms. Danes told my, my pick. Uh, what was the other gentleman's name, Mr. Rapley?
Help.
Christopher Bells.
Christopher Bells.
Yes. I'll appoint Christopher Bells as the alternate.
And and that should complete the entire board.
Now they're ready to go uh, get to work. Okay, how, next up, we have announces the mayor and council members on items of community interest. Mr. Smith.
I have none tonight.
Ms. Haley.
Uh, somebody else may be gonna say this, but in case you don't, Saturday morning, eight o'clock, Los Palapas Coffee with a Cop. The Police Association is ha- having a gathering, and we're all invited to attend and and eat a taco and have a cup of coffee and visit with our police officers who will be there. And the second thing I want to mention is uh National Night Out will be October the third, Tuesday night, October the third. And I've talked to Chief Zuniga and also to Mr. Custin- Corporal Castaneda about doing a hybrid National Night Out event where neighbors, neighborhoods gather in a very informal time to get together and reconnect with each other and then take advantage of what's being offered at the Commons by the Police Department, the exhibits and different businesses that will be participating so that, because we're all so close by, that we could get to do both and and have a, an evening of neighborhood reconnection and also being part of the police uh Police Association and the Police Department's Night of Community. So I'm looking out in the audience. I know who I'm gonna, will be visiting about some of that. But anyway, it'll be a launching, another launching of of reconnecting in our community and having the community spirit after all this time of isolation, that we have an opportunity to s- start that up again and and take advantage of that night to launch it. And end of my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May.
Uh, that triggered a thought on my uh thinking in October. October is a beautiful month, but it's also the month where we are going to be blessed with the near total eclipse of the sun on a Saturday, uh, the fourteenth of October from ten thirty to one thirty in the afternoon. Uh, just to plant a seed of thought, um, maybe this would be a good opportunity for a community engaged event uh to view the eclipse. It will be historic.
Thank you, Mr. May, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank counsel for making the appointments to the Economic Development Committee. We're very pumped about getting to work on that. I visited once already with the Chair, Ms. Galdeon, and we'll be visiting again with her next week to start getting going. So we'll probably have our first meeting sometime in September, I would think, but stay tuned for more, but thank you all for, for making those appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Ms. Danes. A couple of things I would like to recognize, um, you may have seen as you came in that we have some public art out front. That is courtesy of one of our local artists, uh, Mr. Mo Lazry. Uh, Mr. Lazry wanted to make some pieces for the City of Castle Hills for us to keep those are temporarily on loan because we just recently got the uh policy in place to accept uh gifts such as that. So I'm I'm hoping that we could showcase the art from some of our other residents and add a different dynamic to the City of Castle Hills. I see us moving forward and addressing critical infrastructure. And so to the extent that we can start moving forward and affecting different aspects of quality of life, like things in the commons and public art, I think that'll make us a more well-rounded city and to the extent that we have a resident that's willing to let us have that for free, I don't, I don't see it as uh any kind of negative. So thank you, Mr. Lazry, for that. And I also want to thank uh the Castle Hills Christian Church. They came and provided lunch for all city staff. Uh, was it last week now? Uh, Pastor Morgan uh has done a really good job of staying connected, and we catch up, and he's looking for any opportunity that he can to be a better neighbor to the City of Castle Hills. And I'm personally grateful for that, and I thank my colleagues that were able to attend that lunch as well. Mr. Rapley, you had a comment?
I just want to let counsel know and remind you again in September that we'll have our uh annual shred day, second week of October for residents, October fourteenth. And then I believe the first weekend will have our bulk drop off again for residents. So we're working on uh the both of those, but that's sort of back to back uh for residents, both bulk drop off and then a shred day again.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, I, Ms. Danes, all in favor? Unanimous. It is seven forty-five. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being with us this evening.